Open the hearing, requested by Thomas Douglas Architect for Site Plan Review for Second Story Edition. Ryan import Supreme Brewster Court map ID thirty-two C dash one-two-seven. Before we jump in, Carolyn, do you want to just give us an overview of?
Yeah, so this project is really neat, I would say, in that this, it becomes a central business. It also needs a central business architecture review. The applicant received that earlier tonight, got a permit. The only reason it was coming to the planning board is because it's just over two thousand square feet in addition. So that is not a matter of trigger for site plan, but nothing on the site is actually changing. So the things that you might normally look at, like landscaping and parking and degress and all of that, everything's staying the same. You still need site plan review. So actually, we were talking earlier that it might be something you might want to revisit at some point just for central business to say, knowing that the design review is happening at another board, what would be the point of necessarily reviewing a site plan for a project that has no actual site changes? It's just building up because you want to encourage vertical expansion to the extent, yeah, to the greatest extent possible. So anyway, that's sort of it.
Doing everything in central business we want it to do, but they're still coming in front of us because of two thousand four feet.
Right, right. So I guess someone who said that, it's, there's not a lot to review.
That being said, presentation by the applicant.
My name is Tom Douglas. I'm the architect for Joe Ryan. These are just pictures. The one on the left is Hampton Avenue. The one on the right is looking into Brewster Court. So it's got two public faces. It's a building that, that's a site plan in red. North is to the right. See where the parking garage is, Hampton Ave on the left, Brewster Court on the right, and then abuts the brewery. The plan for this project is to like take those two block buildings that are, let's see. Sorry, went too far. Two concrete block structures that were put together at some point in the past. We're going to raise, and they're unequal roof heights. We're raising the roof height up to a common level, building a second floor above that and then building the structure on top of that second floor. So we just got approval, like Carolyn said, from central business for these aesthetic questions about it. This is what it's going to look like from Hampton Ave side. And this is the first floor. The main change is the addition of a stair to get you up to the second floor. And you can see the site on the left is Hampton Ave, on the right is Brewster Court. The site really is taken up completely by parked cars. And there's a little pedestrian entry on the upper right-hand corner of the building that will lead you into a little office space, which pretty much remains unchanged. So like Carolyn said, we're not making any changes at all to the site or anything outside of the building other than to add the second floor, which is going to be stair, bathroom, storage and office. So this is the facade. Upper left is facing Hampton Ave. We're putting on that second story, like I said, some dormers on the top. The upper right drawing is facing the brewery. It's got some steel windows on the bottom that are existing. And the upper part that we're adding, the second floor part, we can't put any windows in because the proximity to the property line requires us to keep that as a two-hour fire rated wall and we can't have any openings in it. The same holds true for the lower right-hand corner drawing. That's the one facing the three-story triple-decker. And then the lower left-hand corner is facing Brewster Court. There's this little pedestrian entry there into the office. And then to the left of that is garage door. And then we're adding the second floor on top of that and moving the sign up. So we're keeping the existing sign and just moving it to a new location. So that's pretty much the extent of the project.
Could it, could it be converted residential?
It's allowed by zone.
If the law is law. Yeah, second floor, first floor retailer. I guess this is a retailer.
Yeah, I don't know if it's being constructed for building code purposes that way, but it could.
It could be in the future if his office became a lobby space. I mean, if, see here, you have to go through the car repair shop lobby to get to the stair. So that would become an apartment lobby. But yeah, the whole building probably definitely would be converted to something different.
So what is actually under our purview as if this is site plan?
Well, I mean, only the approval criteria is that it's not going to be, you know, actually, I should say, one of the things that, I don't know if you said that in your application, but there's, you have a minimum thirty-foot height, otherwise it would trigger special permit. So they've done that, avoid the special permit. So the other, you know, you have a site plan criteria, which you can go through and acknowledge, you know, determine whether or not it meets that. But I guess the reason why I was saying that it seems so limited is that you're really only talking about the building since there are no site changes. So, and, you know, the fact that they're adding commercial intensity to central business and so as it relates to those site plan criteria about consistency of the roof surrounding uses and central business. So there's certainly the approval criteria, but I think it's pretty straightforward in terms of the review and whether or not it's consistent with those criteria. So I can run through them if you want.
It's over thirty feet. It means that it's doing, it seems pretty straightforward that it's doing everything we're trying to promote.
So I'll read the approval criteria. Eleven point six, three fifty, eleven point six is the approval criteria. A, the requested use protects the surrounding premises against serious legal detrimental uses and is applicable to show including from square range, sound, site and property protection of the use light and air. The requested use will promote and leaves and safety to pedestrian movement within the site or adjacent streets. There's no change to the access there. And the use is remaining the same. There's no traffic communication required for the street and construction. The site will function harmoniously in relation to other structures and other spaces in the actual landscape existing buildings and other community assets as it relates to landscaping, drainage, site lines, building orientation, matting, degress, setbacks. The requested use will not overload and will mitigate adverse impacts on the city's resources including the effect on the city's power supply, distribution systems, standard areas, form search collection, treatment systems. And compliance with following technical standards. Curb cuts on the street should be minimized. Nice green bicycle, little traffic movement on the site should be separated to the extent possible. And that's it.
Does that mean we can forget and put it in a bike lane?
Well, I mean, there's already the public sidewalk and access to and from Brewster Court. And it's like a car repair. And, you know, I might, you know, one of the things I think that some that we've lost in some city centers is our car repair and gas stations. The people who live downtown still have cars, so they need those and repairs. To the extent that we continue a viable business downtown and not push people to drive out of town to get their car repaired.
Can we make it work on American car?
Any other questions on board? Public now. You can open up for a public comment. Anybody here from the public? Who wants to weigh in on this one? No?
I move close to public here.
Second.
On paper. Second. Discussion. Seems pretty important to me. Brewster Court.
Alu? Alu, we grant request by Thomas Douglas Architects for Site Plan Review for Second Story Edition. Ryan import Supreme Brewster Court, map ID thirty-two C dash one-two-seven.
On paper. Alu?
I'll thank you.
Good.
Yeah, I guess so. Next up, I'd like to open the hearing, Scott, for seven fifteen. Requested by City of North Hampton Central Services for Site Plan for Reuse of Florence Grammar School at one forty Pine Street, Florence, map ID twenty-three A dash one-four-five. Do you want to walk us through this one?
Yeah, so the, this is actually the first application you've seen under the new zoning that was adopted by the city council to, or adapt the reuse of schools or religious institutional structures. And this is also the site of, on which the board recommended and the city council approved rezoning out of Urban Residential B to Office Industrial. And with the rezoning out of Urban Residential B, it certainly opened up a broader number of leases that would be allowed to be used in this building. But there initially when the school department closed the school and began leasing tenants, their leases to some tenants were, still didn't fit the category in the original special permit that was approved, but also even in the changed zoning. So the reason why this application is coming for you is to follow under the, sort of, open up the flexibility even further than was allowing Office Industrial under the new provision of the historic preservation. So I just wanted to, since you guys looked at this site a couple of times in the last month in terms of its rezoning and what was happening, I just wanted to clarify that for you all in the public that we've seen this a couple of times anyway recently. And this is the first application under that new ordinance. It wouldn't just be automatic? Be it allowances now? There has to be some affirmative stuff by us? Right, so the way the new regulation reads is that in commercial districts, any use that's not normally allowed in the underlying district requires site plan review by the board. And the board can approve that provided that there is a historic preservation restriction placed on the building. So the benefit to the city is that knowing that the building will be protected forever and supporting that would be to allow even more uses to be located in the building to help generate rent.
Is it the intention of the school department to sell the building? Are they surplus of two central services already?
Well, I think Dave Pomeranz is the central services officer, so he can answer any of those.
It says, the application says that it's pretty certain businesses we're not controlling now. What are those?
Yes, they're private schools essentially, voice and yoga. And I think David again can probably speak for those. But it's, they're essentially what we would classify as zoning is private educational use.
Okay, David.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Dave Pomeranz, Director of Central Services. Briefly, a little bit of history. Three years ago, the High School Alternative Learning Program moved back to North Hampton High School. And at that point, even though the school department or the school committee still owned and maintained the Florence Learning Center, there were really no educational uses still going on in the building at that point. While the learning, alternative learning program was there, there were also approximately fifteen tenants, a wide variety of nonprofits and profit groups that rented the building for a number of years, different spaces, different size spaces throughout the facility. And the school committee this past February finally voted to relinquish control and any desire to ever put any educational uses back into the building, turn the building over to the city. Central services had been maintaining it over the years, but it officially became a city facility at that point. And the, with the zoning clarification, it became clear that there were still going to be some situations where there were tenants in the building who didn't meet the new zoning requirements. And the question was what was going to happen? The bigger picture as far as what's going to happen with the Florence Learning Center is in conversations with the mayor, he wants to take this coming fiscal year, starting July one. He would like to allow all those tenants that are in the building to remain there for one more year. And during the course of this fiscal year, I think his intent is to have the finance committee be charged with figuring out the long-term use of the facility. Does the city want to sell it? Does the city want to use it for municipal operations? Exactly what does the city want to do with the building? And in fact, on June twenty-sixth, the finance committee is going to meet out at Florence Learning Center. We're going to tour them through the building, show them the facility, explain how the building operates. There are approximately fifteen tenants in the space right now. There were five or six vacant spaces. I would like to rent those spaces out for this coming fiscal year. There's a variety of tenants Carolyn mentioned. Some of them habitat and humanity is there. The police department has a substation up there. There's a radio station, voice studios, dance, yoga center. It's really a conglomerate of different uses and activities that go on in the building. But we need to basically figure out what's going to happen very long-term with the building and then deal with this more immediate question of what to do with those. I think there were three tenants who don't meet the current zoning parameters. With that, I'll open up to questions.
So Carol, are we doing one like general special, I mean, one general site plan for anything in there currently? Or do we have to be very specific about it?
Well, you know, running through the list, there are a couple, I guess you could do it in a couple of different ways. Looking at the list of existing tenants, there are, essentially, they fall under either private schools or health athletic club type things, which require a special permit in that district. So essentially, you're being asked to provide a site plan review or approval. And then the trade-off is getting a sort of vision restriction so that individual tenants don't have to come forward for a special permit for the law. That's more expensive and more, not as insured as that. And this essentially would establish an allowance and flexibility for even the subsequent owners if the city does ever decide to sell the building as a whole. I would say that instead of saying any uses allowed, I would recommend that you all specify that you're going to allow, you know, private educational uses and health type athletic kind of things like yoga studios.
Four or five spots still left to do. If they rent one, then they're going to have to come back here for a special permit.
Right, no, so what I'm suggesting is that you allow within that specific uses, but not really to the extent that you care or don't care how many fill up those last spaces, then it doesn't really matter. The one caveat I guess I'd say is in terms of opening it up for any uses. Medical office use, as you know, has much more impact than other uses. And already in the office industrial zone, there's an allowance for thirty percent of a building, a building built before, I think nineteen thirty-nine, to be leased or used for medical purposes. So in this site plan approval, I certainly wouldn't encourage you to lump in medical use for any percentage beyond what the underlying zoning allows. And that would be the only thing that I would suggest. And then otherwise, I think the only things really are these private kind of groups that currently require special permit. And then just leave it open to the extent that it doesn't really matter how many of these come and go in the building because I think they're pretty low volume and low impact in terms of the surrounding.
But they go with the building and central services sells it in a year or so. The site plan goes with.
Right, because we have the historic preservation restriction on the building. So the idea is to help maintain the viability of that structure in perpetuity.
So in exchange for a special permit, you get site plan with the tag with the historical reservation? And is it, is it a broad group, just basically a private lessons or a private school? That yoga, dance, gym, or whatever would fall under that umbrella? Or like Steven said, we have to say, we have to restrict and be specific, which includes gyms and?
No, I wouldn't be specific because in the zoning, it's not specific. We sort of generally, someone said they want to give music lessons. It's a private school essentially, or private educational.
So it's a way of granting special permits and doing the site plan in exchange for a convoluted agenda on the topic.
Well, the idea is site plan is a lower threshold for approval. And the idea is if you really want to encourage the preservation of historic buildings for the ultimate preservation of neighborhoods and structures and the way neighborhoods fit together as opposed to encouraging demolition, then you want to provide, you want to be able to look at the impact. So if there was a high traffic use, you might want to figure out how the, if there was enough parking or how the degress was and what the impacts of the neighborhood might be. But a lot of those are site plan issues anyway. But the idea is to create a lower threshold for approval, but in exchange, you're getting a permanent protection of the building that is important to the fabric of the neighborhood.
Just a hypothetical question, if this, if we didn't approve this, you could still have thirty percent of office offices in there?
Yeah.
And even if we approved it?
Right.
Yeah, either way, but I mean, it doesn't really change that. I, I mean, I, just back where I'm at, I think it's better to specifically approve certain uses rather than try and think of everything awful to be in there. This approves, so I don't know how to handle that directly.
Well, office industrial again opens it up. So I think in this case, there's still some special permit items that aren't allowed. So you could just narrow it to health or athletic and then private lessons and keep it at that. And that narrows the window, knowing that the underlying zoning still allows office, back office type uses, light industrial, less than.
The uses that are currently in the building that aren't allowed right now, voice, dance, music, yoga, those all fall under the private school.
Right, well, or health, athletic, I'm not sure which one of the yoga falls under. It's a very close call. I mean, either.
Any questions?
No, I was on the school committee when we voted to put the Florence Learning Center there ten years ago. So it's kind of, you know, it's nice to see it go back in high school, but. No, it was, but it was just, I remember touring the building ten years ago and going through it. And the building was in tough shape then, but at least they were able to get, generate some money and fix the building up and keep it going and stuff.
Any questions? Open to the public. Anybody here from the public who would like to speak about this issue?
No. You said to come up and say your name and address, that's all.
I'm actually just not really sure what to say though. I'm just, because I'm a tenant. So listening is fascinating and wanting to keep the building as it's going and see it grow in that way because it's a great building to be in. And so I'm not really sure what to say. I'm just hoping you guys are going to approve this.
Yep, come on up. Say your name and address.
I'm Robert Bates. We're on North Farms Road right here. The moderator of the Florence Congregational Church next door. And we've been having some problem with the smoking, people coming over from that building. You can see cigarette butts around. Is the building, zones are smoking or non-smoking? Or have you thought about that? Is it going to change in any way?
It's, you know, that's a board and health issue, not so much a planning board issue. Are they walking outside the property?
Right, they come over on our property and they leave the cigarette butts around. We have a non-smoking policy all around the building, but that's been one of the minor things. I just thought since I'm here and you're discussing it, I'd ask, is it going to have any change in the parking? Do you foresee any big change in the way the parking lot will expand or be overcrowded?
Based on the tenant usage in the building right now, there's more than enough attic for parking back there. The lots never get filled, even when the commercial cleaning company is running their trucks in and out of there. There's always probably, I'm thinking almost forty to forty-five percent of that lot still available. So even if we would have rent those additional five spaces over the next year, the type of businesses that we're going to be looking at, you know, so you're talking another maybe three or four spaces occupied at any given time, still more than enough parking, not overcrowded. And after a certain hour of the day, that lot really does empty out. So no significant change in parking whatsoever.
I ask because for our dinners, we often use that lot and semi-services. We have some use of that.
That'll always, that'll always remain a bit.
On those days, those times. Thank you.
Anybody else? No? Close public here. Second? On paper? Discussion.
I'm just curious, Carol, how you want to word, so you're going to say private education and medical?
Yeah. And health.
And health.
Yeah.
Athletic health, not medical health. Although it could be.
I think you can allow by someone who's in the new zone. Yeah, go ahead and do it.
Target?
Can I ask one more question?
Sorry, the public comments have been closed.
All right, so I move to approve the request by the City of North Hampton Central Services for Site Plan for Reuse of Florence Grammar School at one forty Pine Street, Florence, map ID twenty-three A dash one-four-five. As, was that a condition with the?
Yeah, you approved site, site plan for the health athletic facilities and athletic schools. And then there, we need historic preservation. I don't remember what the recommended mission was. I mean, the zoning requires it one be.
Well, the answer is upon expiration of the appeal permit, period for this permit, the applicant shall provide a draft and historic renovation restriction to the planning board and historic commission for review. Once accepted by both bodies, the applicant must record these and register these. So are those conditions?
Second? On paper?
Thank you very much.
So this.
Let me just look at the, um, we just did a legal ad for the twenty-eight. I just want to see what times are available on the twenty-eight. Okay, so you do have, so there's a seven o'clock hearing for the request for amendment to a site plan, simple landscaping amendment on the twenty-eight.
Yeah.
Excellent question. Um, is it on?
No.
No. But no, that reminded me that they're coming in, see, I couldn't remember what date that was being, I think it's July. So, you know, I would suggest you could do it at seven fifteen or seven thirty. Seven fifteen, you might start it a little bit late. Seven thirty, there might be a little bit, yeah, I don't know, three o'clock. But actually, I think I said we go with seven thirty, just seven o'clock. A little longer discussion. No, we're not done with the issue with the people here. Well, Devin and I'm pretty sure Carl are going to be back, so we should have six included the twenty-eight because all of you are going to be here.
Is it Friday, Thursday, Wednesday? Yeah, I just, just as well. Oh, I've got a lot.
So, um, so since we don't have the five, we can special permit for the next one. Doing a tally, I'm sure there's going to be enough people for the twenty-eight, so I would recommend a seven thirty continuation on the twenty-eight.
We have to open the continuing, right?
That's true.
So I'm going to open a request by people's bank for site plan to construct a two thousand square foot plus bank and special permit for more than one third of credit three hundred King Street, Northampton, map ID twenty-four B dash seven seven. I need a motion to continue to the twenty eighth at seven thirty.
I'll make that motion.
Seven. On favor. No? Okay. See you in two weeks.
Two weeks.
Yeah, thank you. Sorry about that.
Yep.
So we have a couple of other things at the docket. Do you want to go to the?
Yes, I would do that. Are we missing you? Missing something on you?
It's a little. So I've got a release of the pump station escrow for Latif at Bridge Road. Escrow's been there for, well, twenty years or so, since the eighties.
That's correct.
And, you know, you want to jump in and walk us through what's going on?
Well, at the time, Latif was constructed, one of the conditions in the special permit, aside from all the conditions about the maintenance, the construction, the rest of it, was to set up a thirty-five thousand dollar escrow account if there should be any repairs. Obviously, it's an important condition, like in any subdivision when you're beginning a project. But at this point in time, as the chair said, it's been there for twenty-plus years, worked fine. The DPW is satisfied with its operation and maintenance. There's a letter from Ned Huntley saying they're okay with the release. Latif is now established, not only in Northampton and East Hampton, but they'd like to release the escrow account. What I'd like is either some decision that I can record so that the special permit condition is then clear that it's been released, or at least certified copies of the minutes. But it's to release condition two A, capital A, sub D of the special permit.
Oh, I remember that. So this, there's a maintenance plan on file with the DPW?
Yeah, they file any maintenance reports. Those are the other conditions.
Right, so they do that every year? City's happy, DPW's already signed off on it?
There's a letter from Ned Huntley, yes.
If we reuse the money, you can spend it on something else, right?
We're going to buy the lot next door.
Why you say greater?
Right, exactly.
Greater?
Yeah, yeah.
It's only six feet deep.
Yeah, yeah.
Why would we, I mean, is this just a, there was a, what is this pump? Is it just like a?
A sewage pump.
Sewage pump. It just lifts the sewage a couple of feet to get to the line.
Oh.
For a couple, for some of the units, yeah.
Are typically these special permit conditions open-ended? Or is it, they have, you know, if after ten years you show up, you know, a yearly maintenance program or what happened?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how many we had at the time. I mean, there are more pumps now that in conditions, it's usually just the homeowners are responsible in perpetuity for this pump.
Well, Latif's still responsible for it. You're not changing that condition.
Right, but I'm saying now, the condition, instead of having an escrow necessarily, it might be, or if there's a concern that there's not going to be money, I know that on a recent project, I think it was twenty sixteen, it's right by behind the Valley Market. It was going to have to be a lot of infrastructure provision. It just wasn't assurance that the developer could come up with the resources to put the infrastructure in and have maintenance responsibility. So like, there were some conditions on that application. It's a case like a space.
I think it was treated like a subdivision. It's just that in the subdivision, typically you have a provision for the release of the bond. And there was no provision put in for the release.
They're a responsible party, and if they don't fix it, they're going to be in deep.
I know. Just waiting for it.
More than metaphor.
Any issues in question? So we're just voting on this?
Yeah, yeah.
Do you need a motion?
Yeah.
I'll make the motion this time. I move that we release the pump station escrow for Latif on Bridge Road.
Second. On favor.
Thank you.
No, we said no more.
Thirty-five thousand dollars won by the lot.
Yeah, let's see. So is it thirty-eight thousand plus interest over twenty years, or is that where it is at?
What it is now after twenty years is thirty.
Oh.
Forty and change.
Yeah, it's in a passport.
Probably lost.
It's still happening.
I'm sure a fifty percent.
All right. What else we got? Two weeks.
Oh, I have a comment on the minutes. My God.
Whoa.
Yesterday.
May twenty-fourth, I was here.
Whoa.
Mentally, you were gone.
I was maybe checked out.
Yeah.
Maybe you just didn't contribute a lot.
Yeah, that was a period of night and you were, mine was elsewhere.
I was here. That was our last meeting.
Okay. I'll correct the record.
Thank you.
Yeah, and actually.
You were here then?
Not the last one?
You were.
I was here, but I didn't open it because I had to recuse myself from the first.
Well, no, May twenty-fourth, we just did zoning stuff.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. I think I know what you're doing, recusing yourself, isn't it?
Yeah, I was looking for one. Most of it.
What's the other side? May twenty?
May twenty-fourth and May tenth.
Motion, I believe, substance as mentioned.
Second. On favor.
As for that time, you had three, was it Friday, you had put together a tenants list to see, because somebody was making.
That was when he was trying to get me fired.
No. Over that, long after that.
No, I don't think it was. I think it was about that time.
Really?
Oh, yeah, it was a campaign.
Because like ball box and somebody else's. Anyway, gas and.
No, she was on the board when you started.
The last time we did that was.
You mean the acting member of the business, all right.
Yeah.
You were just one, I just one.
Thank you. It was, it was all me.
No.
And he would do it again, I bet. Wouldn't you?
Yeah, what's right is right.
But you've got many flowers. That's true. That's true. He's a follower. He has a picture of the bears for me, too.
So if we could actually like.
Yeah. Do you want to do?
Your own personal, you're not a.
What do you think, Sam, we can talk about?
For what?
Not for the.
We're going to live in minutes.
Not for results, no. Just for the poor people to enjoy. I think it would be a shame for the girls to miss out on this conversation about zoning.
Is that what you?
Yeah.
That's probably about that.
Yeah.
I have a scar.
Well, it's true. You're, but it will always come, well, you just have to go back to your, you're going to be doing lots of neighborly duty.
Yeah, they're pretty good, yeah. Then I'm.
It's up to you.
We started. We started U R B, you got half a year or a little more than half a year.
I think it's inappropriate to consider discussion of the building. And we need to get out of here by eight.
Put a play card.
You could.
No, I'm going to spend twelve hours starting one night.
But you have bring Rosie through.
Oh, wow, you're doing that?
Stephen and I and about thirty kids.
We did like one hour or so maybe.
Wow. Wait, so you're going to break your contract with you?
I am, yeah.
Wow.
Staying up and it's.
You need to pay your.
Well, that's what I'm, it's a real like a walk.
Yeah.
So we've never, you're supposed to be walking for twenty-four hours continuously. We've never managed that, but.
Just some member of your team?
One member of the team should always be out for a while, but we've never actually managed that. But every year we've raised, we raise a few thousand dollars and get the kids. And it's fun. It's a good, I mean, it's a great cause and it's a neat campaign, but you end up with three or four chaperones for thirty kids and so you're always checking to make sure.
And now you can't see.
You're now walking off into the woods, you know, to the.
Walking that tent.
Right, you've got a bad knee or likes.
Yeah, exactly.
You have self-control.
Yeah. So and last year, people, parents found out about it late, and they were just dropping their kids off like it was a slumber party at somebody's house. And can I leave Timmy here? He doesn't have a sleeping bag. He didn't raise any money, but it sounds like a lot of fun. I don't, I don't know you, but can he, can you watch him for that twenty-four hours?
Okay, we're going out.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Not this year.
Yeah.
No, it was, it's a lot of fun. They have like a dance. They even dance at the first, like, community.
That's very cool.
And they wake you up with yoga in the morning or a roll bish or something like that.
I had a karate instructor last year, like, did the karate sessions at like one in the morning.
But last, last year, it, last year, four. We all had to run to our, it was like a thunder and lightning.
Oh, yeah.
So they got on P A and said, run away. Basically, so everybody had to run to their cars because you couldn't stay around these metal tents and posts and all this stuff.
Yeah.
So everybody was sitting in their cars and then the sun finally came out and we came back out.
Oh, so you got, got a little nice break.
Had to break. Well, so I had all these sweaty seventeen-year-old boys and I was jammed in my car. You know, smelling up the car for an hour and then we got back.
We run for life, is that it?
So it sounds like your enthusiasm is not there for U R B? Is that a?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
It seems like we're such a short, I mean, four of us.
We'll fire the drink at the hot drink.
Okay, it's four, four, but let's count.
Why don't you show one of the disappointers?
Carol, something disappointing?
No, we'll have lots of time on the twenty-eighth because we're, we've got two permits.
Keep in mind, keep in mind, Carolyn, this is a nice, I'm going to get that out of here.
But she has to fight the good fight.
This way they'll be kind to you. Move to a term.
Motion to adjourn? On favor?